Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. This is the regular board meeting, Tuesday, March 28, 2023. It's 10 o'clock a.m. We're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room, Melville Lane in Bisbee. Any item that's on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And if you would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. And I need to let you know right now that Agenda Item Number Nine has been removed from the agenda at the request of staff, and it will be on the April 25 Agenda. The Board may choose to recess and go into executive session for discussing or of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter that's on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. And we begin with the roll call. District One?
Crosby's here.
District Two Supervisor English is present. District Three?
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 49117018 pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-92004 direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda, but to speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the Board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda has been published. And this means that some presentation materials displayed at the Board may differ slightly from the attached version. We begin with the call to the public, which is those people who wish to speak on agenda items or items that are not on our agenda, and they are always in in lieu as when they called in or or wrote the information. And the first one is on Teams. It's Jeff Sturgis. Are you available, Jeff?
Yes, I am. Good morning. I'm Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista. Can you hear me?
I can. You have three minutes.
I live in Cochise County, Board of Supervisors, District One. This is the district that Supervisor Tom Crosby is supposed to represent. Tom Crosby has campaigned with the slogan that he is the taxpayer's champion. There are many reasons that citizens of District One should sign the petition to recall Tom Crosby, but having taken actions that are currently costing taxpayers over $140,000 should be enough for many of them to sign. As reported in our local newspaper, the taxpayers are now up for even more expense because his and Supervisor Judd's antics will cost taxpayers another bundle of legal fees, et cetera. A new lawsuit has been brought against Cochise County after Crosby and Judd forced our elections director to resign and gave virtually all election authority to their buddy Recorder David Stevens, who, of course, supported their previous actions that cost taxpayers so much. Because I am a constituent living in Tom Crosby's district, I once again ask him to resign and save our district and the rest of Cochise County citizens the further outrageous expense of keeping this taxpayer's champion in office. Thank you.
The next person is Allison Morris on Teams. Are you available, Allison?
Yes, can you hear me?
It's a little garbled. Go ahead.
Oh, it is? Is this any better?
Maybe you're too close to the microphone.
Okay, let me see. I'll just move this over here. Maybe is this any better over here?
That's better. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Allison Morris from Portal. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. While it's undeniable that we need a new jail, the ballot measure for the new jail district tax should be postponed. Our Elections Department has suffered disruption, delays, and employee departures over the past several months, largely due to the unlawful and unethical actions of Supervisors Crosby and Judd. Their most recent attempt to transfer election oversight to Recorder Stevens triggered yet another lawsuit, this one by Attorney General Mays. Regardless of the outcome at tomorrow's hearing, Cochise County voters deserve a nonpartisan election system they can trust. By the way, according to our county's public election calendar, because 2023 is an odd year, all elections are required to use mail-in ballots this year. An additional 0.5% sales tax for the new jail unfairly burdens low-income households. Higher costs for food and goods will take a larger percentage of their income, and over 17% of our county currently lives in poverty. Four cities in Cochise County already have a 9.6% sales tax, which is significantly higher than the 8% average sales tax in Arizona. The proposed additional 0.5% jail district tax would bump the rates to over 10% for Benson, Bisbee, St. David, and Tombstone, a real hardship when the per capita income for Cochise County is less than $30,000 a year. The Sierra Vista Herald recently published an excellent article by Fred Miller in which he outlines several feasible alternatives for funding the new jail that consider residential and commercial property taxes. These include adjustments to the real estate transfer tax and increasing property tax for higher-valued properties, a surcharge on high-value homes that are not primary residences or that are left vacant for more than a year without trying to be sold, or a combination of increases to both sales tax and property taxes. Finally, there is no mention on the ballot of the physical location of the new jail, and citizens have a right to know this before voting on it. The new jail should be built in Bisbee, which is the location of our existing jail in need of replacement. Please delay this upcoming election until a new elections director is hired, alternative funding sources are explored, and the physical location of Bisbee is clearly stated on the ballot. Thank you for your time.
Next is Tricia Gerardette, also on Teams. Are you there, Tricia?
I'm here. Yes. Good morning, Supervisors. This is Tricia Gerardette in Sierra Vista. I also want to address the jail district election, but slightly different angle. The ballots, as I understand it, are due to be mailed in three weeks. And I would make an assumption that they are either printed or certainly close to being printed at this time. So I have several questions that I hope the Supervisors will agree to put on an agenda in the near future. And those questions are: Is the ballot paper acceptable? Or is it an experimental as part of the grant that Recorder Stevens obtained from the state? The ballots will all be mailed in, which two Supervisors, I believe, have expressed concerns with, the security of. It will be then presumably tabulated by a machine. We also have Supervisors who have expressed a concern about the security of those machines. So my question includes, can we have a presentation soon from Recorder Stevens about some of these questions? And can the Supervisors indicate if they will accept the results of the tabulation? Or what their conditions might be for accepting or rejecting said ballot counting? Thank you.
Next is Alfred Kern. I believe you're in person, Alfred.
Okay, my name's Alfred Kern. Live with 3460 East Greenwash in Douglas. And we still have issues with that road. And I I want to say that if the county is not going to maintain that road, keep the county trucks off. I don't care if somebody calls. They don't need to be there. So the county is not maintaining the road, and why? You know, you never answer me, and you never say anything why they're not doing whatever they're supposed to be doing. Our our Tom mentioned that he had driven on Kaiju principle, but he didn't say what the condition of the road was. And if you don't say what the condition of the road is, you know, why, why am I coming here? I've been coming here since last February. No responses. None. You sit there and you don't say anything. So is, am I wasting my time? You can answer yes or no if you want. You know, am I wasting my time coming here? Because I do have other things to do. I live up in the mountains. So, listen. If I'm wasting my time, say I'm wasting my time. We're not going to do anything. And we'll take it from there. That's all I have.
Thank you. The next speaker is on Teams, Radford Hyde. Are you there, Radford? Radford Hyde on Teams?
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me now?
It's a little low, but clerk of the Board, can you hear for the record?
Good morning.
Sure, I can, yes. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Radford Hyde, and I'm in Sierra Vista, Arizona. And I'm talking again about the certification of the election machines. As I stated in the last meeting, I've been going through, there's actually a committee at the Secretary of State's office called the Secretary of State Equipment Certification Advisory Committee. And going through the minutes in the notes, it's clear that if anyone wants a system, and what I mean by a system is a complete certified election system to be used in the state of Arizona, it needs to get the blessing of the Secretary of State's Equipment Certification Advisory Committee. They've had 17 meetings since February 13th of 2019, and a few of those meetings had discussions regarding the system that Cochise County was using in the last couple of elections, and that is ESNS 6.0.4.0. None of those meetings mentioned anything about introducing express poll tablets that introduce internet connectivity to a central database for the purpose of tracking who voted and where at the election centers versus the precincts, when you used to just have to sign a book. Everyone knew who was coming where. The tablets are not mentioned in any of the meeting minutes, going back those, all those 17 that are posted. And there are discussions of decertification of entire election systems based on the non-introduction of evidence claiming or supporting that a Spanish translation module in one machine has not been fulfilled with the documentation. Introducing a whole set of poll tablets with internet connectivity is way greater in effect than one Spanish translation line of code. And this, this is in defense of Crosby and Judd's argument about wanting to have more information about the certification status. They never once took ESNS, never once took the express poll tablets to the Secretary of State Equipment Certification Advisory Committee for consideration, but Lee Samara just injected them into our elections without having the proper authorization to do so. And the Secretary of State can sit there all they want and tell us and provide fake certification documents, and they provided that 25-page mess that never addressed this, not once. We need to get rid of the machines. I praise Judd and Crosby for their steadfast sticking to-
The next speaker is Sandy Trolle. Is she in person? If you would give us your name and address to begin with, please. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sandy Trolle from Sierra Vista. I just have a couple of things I wanted to mention. I would like these things to be added to the agenda if possible, to delay the jail bond election. The jail bond must be delayed until there's a legal process in place, which will ensure full chain of custody and verifiable identity for all mail-in voters. I also want, would like Tom Crosby to be nominated to be Chairman of the Board. We need to get rid of the machine tabulators. Our current voting system is violating our civil rights by using illegal equipment and processes, as presented at the meeting last month. We want hand count, paper ballots, and one-day voting. And then I have a quote that I found from George Orwell. "All tyrannies rule through fraud and force, but once the fraud is exposed, they must rely exclusively on force." Thank you.
Hey, that's all of the speakers for the call to the public.
I have a comment, which is, I mean.
You can't comment on anything that's in the call to the public.
I think that I can if I am going to suggest a work session.
Okay.
Okay. Several persons from both sides of the aisle have expressed-
Supervisor Crosby, may I just interrupt for a second? Supervisor Crosby, Supervisor Crosby, please. Madam Chair, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I would like to clarify what can be said, what can be said to call to the public. The Board is limited to three options. The Board may respond to criticism, direct that staff undertake a study of an issue, or direct that something be put on a future agenda. Those are the three responses in call to the public.
This is a future agenda, and I said, several persons from both sides of the aisle, so to speak, have expressed concerns about the elections processes and chain of custody issues. Therefore, I will submit a request for another work session, even though I found Mr. Lechance's presentation sufficiently compelling on February 23rd. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have the consent agenda items, which are Items 1 through 5, and I'm waiting for a motion to approve those consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda items 1 through 5.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, and unanimous, and so ordered. We now move to item number six. Item six was originally scheduled for the Board to consider an appeal to the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting denial of special use SU 23.02 for Sirota Guest Lodging. Due to an unanticipated emergency medical procedure, the appellant has formally requested that the Board, the appeal be tabled until the May 9, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Madam Chair, if we table this item as in the agenda, then Christine came for nothing. So does she have something that she would like to speak?
No, we won't open it up.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
I'd like to motion, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I move we table until May 9, 2023 Order Supervisors Regular Meeting, Consideration of Docket SUA 23-01, Sirota Guest Lodging Appeal. An appeal of the February 8th, excuse me, appeal of the February 8, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Denial of Special Use SU 23-02 Sirota Guest Lodging.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And to the public's information, not, we're not opening this because that would give the public an opportunity to make comments, but the, the appellant is not here, and so that wouldn't be appropriate. We need to hear both sides at the same time. So we have a motion in a second. Any further comments? Hearing none, and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered and tabled. Item number seven. Adopt zoning ordinance 2305. Let's put a motion on the table before we hear from planning and zoning.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt zoning ordinance 23-05 to rezone parcel 116-19-251A from SR 22, single residential, one dwelling per 22,000 square feet, to RU4 rural, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Mr. Kevin Blackburn and Ms. Letitia Young.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so give us the information, and I think we have documentation.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a rezoning request by Mr. Blackburn and Ms. Young. Property, pardon, excuse me, the parcel is zoned SR 22, which is a single residential, one dwelling per 22,000 square feet. They have obtained multiple parcels and are requesting to rezone those to RU4, which would be one dwelling per four acres. It is in growth category D. It is designated as rural. It is in the Mid-Sulfur Springs Valley Community Plan. As of yesterday, the site actually had been cleared. There were some complaints about an RV out there without benefit of the permit, but the applicant has cleared up the site, at least as of yesterday. Their hope is to build a single-family residence out there. So the parcel is identified as 11619251A. It is a total of 4.22 acres, and it's highlighted on yellow on that map. This is the applicant's site plan. Again, they propose to build a single-family home out there as well as a shop on the property. These are some photographs of the property. The RV can be seen in the lower left, which again has been removed, and then our sign and Treasure Road on that screen. Staff does have two factors in favor of approving. First, that the request complies with 11 of the applicable rezoning factors used by staff to analyze the request. The request would be in keeping with the rural character of the area. We do not have any factors identified against approval. There was one letter that had been received early in the process in opposition. I had spoken with that person both on the phone and at the Sun Site's community meeting, and after I explained that there will be a permitting process, they had since said that they were, they had no issues with the request. With that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Well, let's open up the public hearing on this ordinance 2305. I haven't had anyone request to speak. Any comments from the Board, questions?
None at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Is Judd?
No, thank you.
Okay. So I'll close the public hearing, and we do have a motion on the floor, and we have a second to that motion. Give you one more chance to have comments if you wish before I call for the vote. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 2311. I'd like to have a motion on the floor so that we can have discussion if necessary.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt Resolution 2311 to approve Docket CPA-2301, patent, a minor amendment to the comprehensive plan growth areas and land jurisdiction map of Cochise County Comprehensive Plan, and adopt zoning ordinance 23-06 to rezone parcel 120-18-021 from R18 Residential, one dwelling per 18,000 square feet to GP, General Business pursuant to the application of Mr. Caleb Malboeff.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Go ahead.
All ears.
Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing so that you can comment, and we'll have comments perhaps. Go ahead.
Thank you. The applicant is Mr. Caleb Malboeff. He, I did speak with him last night. He did not believe he would have service to be able to speak today, but felt comfortable that if there was any questions of the Board, I should be able to satisfactory answer them for you.
Okay, go ahead.
The location is State Highway 80 on Patton Street between Miller and Sybil Roads. It's parcel, parcel is identified as 12018021. It's approximately 1.7 acres. It's currently designated as R18, which is residential, one dwelling per 18,000 square feet. The proposed zoning is general business. Growth category is C, rural community areas, and no change is proposed to that. The designation, however, is neighborhood conservation, and the proposed designation is developing. The Board may recall back in, I believe it was January or February, we had a request in St. David come in for a gas station. This request is almost identical to that, except the intention for this request is to be allowed to build possibly up to three, fourplexes on the property. It's currently vacant, heavily treed. And again, proposed use is multifamily, though all uses that are allowed in the commercial district would be permitted. Planning and Zoning Commission recommend, recommended unanimously to forward this to you with approval. This is an aerial photograph of the site. Again, you can see it is very heavily treed. It's located with a, excuse me, a single-family residence is located directly to the west. A mini storage is located directly to the east. And to the north, we have the RV park, the Apache RV park. This is the comprehensive plan, so large portions of the area is designated as C, Neighborhood Conservation. On the left-hand side of the slide, you can see the sea developing. That was approved by the Commission Board earlier this year. This is the zoning of the area, so all that red is general business. We did receive three letters of opposition, one from this property and one from these two properties right there. As you can see, two of those properties are already zoned general business, and all three of those properties have the RV, existing RV park highly visible, and you'll see that in the photographs in a little bit. This is the applicant's conceptual site plan. Again, he is looking to build approximately three, fourplexes on site. That may change depending upon floodplain and septic issues out there. This is an example of what the applicant has built in the city of Benson. It would be similar to this, except there would be another unit on the back, two more units on the backside of that. So we do have 10 factors that the application complies with, and we have two that with conditions, they comply, and the conditions all revolve around ADOT. ADOT is going to require traffic statement similar to the other project, as well as paved driveways, encroachment permits, and any improvements that might be dictated by that study. My understanding is the applicant has already contracted with an engineer and is working on both his floodplain issues as well as his ADOT permits pending approval from the Board today. So we do have four factors in favor of approval. First is the request complies with 12 of the applicable rezoning factors used by staff to analyze this request. The request would be in keeping with the character of the existing development in the area. The request would provide additional housing options in the St. David area. The request is logical extension of the existing commercial zoning. And we have three letters of opposition that were received. The request does not comply with one factor, and that, as Ward may recall, is the St. David area plan does not allow rezonings to general business, although there is only one parcel in St. David that is not general business, that's commercially designated. So we do have that. So here are some photographs. Top two are of the site. Bottom left is looking on Patton Street or State Highway to the east. The bottom right, that is the mini storage directly adjacent to this site. The top left is a mixed-use business building that is located right down the road. Up, let's say top right, top left is existing mixed-use building. Top right is the, another photo of the mini storage. Bottom left is that single-family residence located directly to the west. And then an existing apartment complex is in the lower right, and that is adjacent to the mini storage. With that, I've already mentioned the conditions that ADOT has placed on the project. Staff does not have any additional conditions beyond our standard. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions following.
Well, this is a public hearing. We've opened it as a public hearing. I haven't, I do not have any requests of the public to speak, but I do have one question. Uh, at the information, you said there were three people who were in opposition and they were neighbors to this property. What were their reasons for opposition? Because they're, they're in the, in general business.
In, in, in general, the opposition, they were concerned about um, having increased density, uh, the potential for having low-income housing um, and attracting uh, a nuisance uh, to the area.
Board members, any questions?
Mr. Pershman, can we look at slide number six, please? Uh, I know that's pretty microscopic for everybody, but I was able to read where it says sixty-foot setback line, which is uh, the line that's, that, that appears horizontal just below what looks like a curb. So, how does that, that's sixty feet from highway eighty?
Yeah, so they're gonna have to do some survey work out there. Um, ultimately, highway eighty in St. David is going to be uh, or the, the center turn lane is going to be continued all the way through St. David. Um, so once the property is surveyed, the traffic study comes back, the extent of, of any improvements that might need to be required as part of this project would be dictated at that point. Um, we do have a pre-application, I believe, coming up next week uh, with the gas station. Uh, we're trying to see if we can coordinate uh, those two projects uh, with ADOT so that that left turn, that center turn lane could be constructed all at one point in time.
Okay, so we're going with a center turn lane instead of D cell lanes, which is what I said my preference was when talking about the gas station, which is way better. So, uh, that, that gives me a little uh, trepidation there. Uh, but I understand, you know, I, I, I understand that somebody's property and that sixty-foot setback, you don't want to go in there and just take it from them. So how does a sixty-foot setback as depicted there compared, compared to other residential areas that are, that are right there in St. David? Uh, in other words, it's not called, then, this is my understanding, it's called commercial because it's re- because it's rentals.
He's going with commercial because the density would be higher. So under our general commercial land use district, you can have one dwelling, you know, per thirty-six hundred square feet. Whereas under the existing residential, it's one per eighteen thousand square feet. So it increases it allow.
I understand. Uh, nonetheless, there are residences and so I am wondering what, what would the difference be if that was just a house, a regular, single-family house? What would the setback have to be compared to that sixty-foot that we see there?
That R eighteen would be a ten-foot setback.
From the highway?
Correct.
That's pretty amazing.
Whatever they're, from their property line, wherever that property line was.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
Were there, um, I, I imagine this went out broadly. It wasn't just those two that, that voted against it. Were there, were there conversations positive about the, the project?
So I did not receive any other feedback. No one actually reached out. Usually, somebody will reach out and talk to me. I've had no conversations with anybody. Uh, I received three letters blindly. Um, the applicant indicated the same, same thing. He had a few text message exchanges. Um, but that was it. Um, as I commented last time on social media, I saw some mixed reviews, but the, the comments have all revolved around the fact that uh, people were scared that these were going to be low-income housing and we're dealing with land use. That's not an issue that staff is considering.
At the rate, just to comment, at the rate of rentals these days and they're gonna be brand new, I doubt they'll be low income. Um, just have to put that out there. The idea, though, behind having housing, it, it's a good thing in a community like that because people are always saying, you know, I wish my kids could stay here or, you know, when you need to move into a community, you need a place to live. Um, until you find a permanent home. So, um, I don't, I just, I just wondered if other people had those kind of ideas, those kind of thoughts.
Not that I've heard of, but I will add that at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the applicant did state for the commission that he does not have any intention of this being a low-income project, that he wants to uh, rent these out for the most amount of money that he would be able to, that the market would support.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm in favor of free market economy and property rights.
Now the comments, now we'll close the, the public hearing. We do have a motion on the floor for approval. Any other comments before I call for the vote?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Okay, uh, item nine has been removed from the agenda and we now go to action items that this sheriff has been waiting for. Um, let's have a motion so that we can have some discussion and hear what's going on.
Madam, Madam Chair, I move that we approve agreement for purchase and sale between Cochise County and Rushmark Soldier Creek LLC in the amount of four million, five hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of property located at six sixty-five North Garden Avenue, Sierra Vista, Arizona eight-five-six-three-five, tax parcel one-zero-six dash sixty-five dash zero-one-seven-A to be utilized as the Southeast Arizona Combined Intelligence and Border Operations Center.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Okay, sell us on the idea.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. Several months ago, this board uh, in partnership with the Sheriff's Office, accepted five million dollars from the state of Arizona to seek out this uh, adventure for a, a collective border operations center that would house state, local and federal law enforcement to include some uh, private partners in that to support the quality of life here on the border with our community and the state of Arizona and beyond. Uh, over the last several months, uh, County Administrator Rich Karwaska and his team, along with Ms. Christine Roberts and her team, uh, have worked with my team to bring this vision to a reality and that's why I stand in front of you today. In the audience today is also Mr. Frank Morrow and Candace White from First West Properties. Thank you both for your patience, and I say it again, your patience. Uh, we are government, so it took some time on this uh, for support on this project. Uh, and I'd also like to give a shout to my team uh, on this also. Today I stand in front with a signed agreement from Cochise County and the seller, uh, the, what I'm representing with you to accommodate this, what, this facility that's in front of you here would accommodate our operational needs to promote education, awareness, prevention and enforcement. As the slide shows here, this is a uh, photo of the facility. Uh, so I got it right here. The building's about thirty-six thousand square feet. Uh, it was, been used as a DoD contracting building. We've had county facilities along with uh, the county administrative staff come in there from IT, look the facility, my team's looked at it, others have looked at it, we've had the state in there looking at it, uh, just to say, hey, it's limited on what's out there in Cochise County that could support a project of this uh, magnitude, but this building does do that. And so, there's a, look at it right there. I know you have a copy of this and if you need another hot copy, let me know. I'll get to you after the meeting, but bottom line, this is the uh, the design of the facility. I'll go right through it. Currently, there's nineteen office spaces. That seems limited when you hear it like that, but these offices are huge, so it's just like nineteen offices, it's beyond that. And as you're gonna see, there are fifty-four cubicle work stations within there. This facility will house between forty and fifty workers. Uh, as you know, we just got a grant for eighteen million that this board approved several weeks ago, uh, for thirty-four support, civilian support staff that be housed out of this facility along with law enforcement. Some of the amenities to the facility, again, sixteen thousand square uh, feet of office. Uh, two break rooms, one secure conference room, one secure storage room, twenty thousand square foot of warehouse. I want to hit on that for a minute. This is actually the opportunity for us to process uh, vehicles from our special operations uh, all the way down. So this is something we don't currently have. She's got a secure internet uh, facility inside to house our um, our fusion center, intel center. Uh, it's also got the uh, it's compatible to our current security system. The camera system is already in place at the facility and adequate uh, parking for uh, all the people that work in there. And this is, it's copy the server room where we'll have our fusion center and camera room. This is a copy of the warehouse. Uh, Mr. Morrow still has some property in there that's not staying, but uh, and this is where we're gonna uh, segregate this with the five hundred thousand for rehab, which will have uh, chain-linked gated areas for different areas of our specialty to use. But that warehouse like this, it's a beautiful warehouse, some we, again, we don't have, which we can, we're gonna put some specialty vehicles in there. Also, some of our UC code vehicles will be hidden in there too. So, again, it's just an opportunity to come together on that. The um, also on the facility, Cochise County Sheriff's Office with agreement through the state, it's about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, discretionary border funds, we've used it for everything from K-nine units uh, to vet bills, you name it. The support SABR, which is Southern Arizona Border Regional Enforcement, where uh, we have backfilled those funds uh, out of other grants. So with that money that we get every year, will help sustain and do upgrades that needed. We realize we can't get everything one inside. It's a move-in ready facility. Um, so we're
For chairs.
Except for chairs. For some reason, the former contractor took the chairs, but uh, we'll, we'll work that out. We got a little, like, say, we got a half a million for renovation. We'll have to buy some chairs, but uh, so I'm asking this board for uh, your approval today to support the purchase of this property for four point five million with additional five hundred thousand renovation IT costs to enhance our collective efforts uh, for local, state and federal to sustain that quality of life for the citizens here in Cochise County and beyond. With that said, I'll yield the questions and answers.
I, I think you didn't explain it. It may be self-explanatory, but probably for the record should be. There's the, the red line on your um, property layout. You might explain that that's where our property ends, is that red, it, it's not very visible there. You can certainly see it better on the handout that we have.
And if I may, Madam Chair.
There wouldn't be a fence there.
Yeah, we have no D, no intent to put a fence up around the facility uh, on that. Mr. Karwaska?
I was just gonna, and state that there's no intention of uh, putting a fence on that line.
But when you drive up, there's obviously two buildings.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
And so, this is the delineation that probably will have to be engineered and marked, you know, on the, on the deed. Because right now, I think it's one facility.
Mr. Morrow, is that correct? I mean, I'll, I'll, that's correct. Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, that does have to do with the uh, the word bifurcation, I presume. So uh, if Ms.
Splitting it.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Roberts or Mr. Morrow would like to tell us about bifurcation. That was a uh, a term that I hadn't seen before.
Sounds better than saying we split it down the middle.
Is that all it is?
That's, that's all it is. It's similar that basically you have one parcel and you have the two buildings sitting on the one parcel. The Sheriff's Office is looking to buy only one of the buildings, so therefore the parcel needs to be split.
Okay. And so that is in the works, I presume? That's something that's gonna happen. Okay, does the uh, facility that the, that the county is going to approve the money for, does that have city sep- su- city sewer or septic at this time?
Uh, city sewer.
City sewer. Okay, does it have commercial water or does it have its own well? Has commercial water?
Commercial.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
I, I'm glad you put into the record maintenance, because anytime we enter into projects, whatever is gonna rely on our local tax dollars, I need to be concerned about. So, if you are willing to dedicate that money that is already coming in through a different source, uh, that gives me a, a comfort level that we can move it forward. You know, you can always, if, you've got the money to buy it, but it's kind of like, you know, buying a house and you don't have the money to put the dishwasher in, it isn't there, you don't have the money to. And so, um, we need to think about those things when we're looking at property. Uh, and sometimes it's good to look the gift horse in the mouth, you know, to make sure. Any other questions, comments, Ms. Judd?
I'm, I'm pleased, I, when we, when I heard you were going after trying to find a building, I had no idea you would find something this nice.
Me too.
And this appropriate. So it's, it's a good thing.
Madam Chair, if I could say, this is the first time, uh, again, I've been in the county a long, long time, um, thirty-nine years uh, overall here with law enforcement, but this is the first time we'll have a collective center like this in Cochise County, which I'm very excited about and I, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say it. Also, a big shout out to Governor Ducey and the state team for, for donating the five million dollars to the Cochise County Sheriff's Office. This is the, actually the fourth facility we've, since I've been sheriff for the last eleven years, we've been able to upgrade or purchase a facility of some sort from our training center to the Wilcox uh, satellite office up there, uh, the remodel up there and uh, and on and on. So I'm very excited about this and and, and I'll just share it. I, I think it's important for the folks to know and every time we do a grant or we go after a project, we try to do it at no cost to the taxpayers or nominal cost, if let me put it that way. Uh, we've collected over one hundred million dollars in the last eleven years to offset cost to the taxpayers. So, I'm very impressed with my team and thank them for that too. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, of course, you're talking about county taxes. That includes very much.
Ms. Judd?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we have um, a motion on the floor. Always like to ask at the last minute for any other comments for the record before I call for the vote. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so ordered. So, you can go have a soda now, Mark. Okay, next is the housing authority and uh, let's have a motion on resolution twenty-three thirteen.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt resolution twenty-three dash thirteen to approve AZ zero-three-four streamlined annual and section eight housing choice voucher administrative plans for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anita, looks like you had to go through a lot of planning here.
That's not unusual. You folks see this every year. So, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. As I mentioned, it's that time of year to go through our uh, annual and admin plans, which will be effective July first, twenty-twenty-three through um, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. So this is a, a recap of our annual plan, which is HUD form five-zero-zero-seven-five and the elements that are required in our annual plan. So under section B one, the revision of the PHA plan, which is our administrative plan. All that we did for a change this year was to remove the square footage of the rooms. While we uh, when, when we do rent reasonableness, while we look at the square footage, the comparables of the square footage of the house overall and the number of bedroom sizes and, and bathroom sizes, we don't take into consideration the individual rooms. So that was actually removed from the uh, administrative plan. So our financial resources for last year, uh, HCV, which was uh, four hundred and ninety-three vouchers, twenty-one emergency housing vouchers and eighty-eight HUD-VAS vouchers. Uh, and Supervisor Crosby kindly pointed out that I didn't put a, a dollar sign in front of this, but it's roughly three point six-six-five million dollars that, that we spent last year for housing assistance payments. That doesn't include the administrative costs. Housing opportunity for persons with AIDS, we spent um, a hundred and ninety-one, eight-thirty-six. And uh, family self-sufficiency, which is administrative, is fifty-eight, was fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Under the element of the uh, five-zero-zero-seven-five uh, housing needs, we opened our waiting list back in January of twenty-twenty-one. At that time, we received uh, one thousand four hundred and six applications. Today, there are two hundred and twenty-nine households on the Cochise County waiting list and then sixty households on the Douglas waiting list. Um, HUD has requested that until we exhaust the Douglas waiting list, um, Douglas opened up their waiting list just prior to us taking on the City of Douglas Housing Authority. So they opened it up last February. And um, as we pull people from the waiting list, it's determined by uh, the date and time that the application was submitted as well as the preferences that the applicant has. So um, due to the difference in the time that the, that the uh, waiting lists were open, HUD requested that we go ahead and keep the waiting list separate until we exhaust those sixty from the Douglas waiting list. And then after that, it'll all be merged into one. The eligibility selection and admissions are determined by HUD and the uh, PHA stands for Public Housing Authority, which is what we are. Uh, for families whose head of household is eighteen years of age or older. We also do a rent determination, which is verified at admission and also annually. We conduct informal reviews in which we investigate and respond to complaints by participant families, owners and public. Under the homeownership element of the plan, we have no homeownership program. However, our uh, family self-sufficiency program does promote self-sufficiency through coordination of supportive services. So this is uh, HUD requires that we have the definition of both substantial deviation and significant amendment, amendment modifications. So uh, under substantial deviation, change in the use of federal funds for activities that affect tax goals or mission, which is PAC, of course, stands for the Housing Authority of Cochise County. Um, it, and it also doesn't include changes in organizational structure. Um, it, and it also doesn't include changes in organizational structure, budget revisions, or minor HUD changes. Under significant amendment modifications, it, uh, includes changes not required by HUD sufficient to rent admissions policy or the waiting lists that change the administrative plan. And it also doesn't include changes in organizational structure, budget revision, or minor HUD changes. Under section B two of the annual plan, uh, we are, uh, we're still considering collaboration to undertake project-based vouchers. Although, um, we're not considering purchasing a property, what that would entail is, um, HUD allows us to allocate up to five percent of our allocated units to a particular building that, that someone else might own, which would, which would likely be a municipality. Our most recent fiscal year audit, we had no findings. Um, under the civil rights certification in section B four, that's HUD Form five-zero-zero-seven-seven, uh, to approve plans and certify agreement to HUD, that's one of the, uh, the documents I'm requesting the board chair signs today. Also, uh, under, uh, the five-zero-zero-seven-seven-SL, it's certification by state or local official that our plan is consistent with the consolidated plan, um, the state consolidated plan. We are consistent in that, uh, the, the Arizona Department of Housing is who publishes the consolidated plan, the state consolidated plan. We provide lead-based paint education, housing quality standards inspections, which monitors health and safety, and, um, and we also participate in homeless outreach strategies. So, under section B six of the annual plan, we're still a high performer, uh, with HUD. We also are continuing to expand HUD-VASH. Our leasing is maximized, uh, for HUD-VASH, and, uh, HUD-VASH is, uh, for the veterans, the, the rental assistance for veterans. And the VA has asked us if we would consider taking on more vouchers with this program, which they would like to take effect, uh, July first of this year. We also are planning to apply for the Lead-Based Paint Hazard Control Grant this year. That was, uh, one of the, the goals that the board approved in our five-year plan. So, uh, the progress report from our five-year plan, speaking of which, uh, is to expand the project-based assistance. As I mentioned earlier, we're considering the collaboration for doing that. We were also awarded, uh, twenty-one emergency housing vouchers and, uh, seven special-purpose vouchers as part of our annual contributions contract, which is quite different from a competitive grant. And, uh, in that we're, these are our vouchers, and we don't have to reapply for them. The, the funding is based on our leasing. The emergency housing and special-purpose vouchers are specifically for people who are fleeing domestic violence, sex trafficking, uh, people who are homeless, or, um, or at risk of becoming homeless, and a needs assessment is, is done, and then they're forwarded, or they're, they're, uh, sent to us for housing by the domestic violence shelters or homeless shelters, mental health agencies. Also, we, uh, continue to have, have two fair housing seminars, um, each year. Until recently, we've done virtual seminars, uh, due to COVID-nineteen concerns. However, we are going to be having our first in-person in years, right here in this room, on May seventeenth. We are also, uh, HUD just announced last week that the tenant protection vouchers for foster youth independence is available. So, um, as you all know, I've been collaborating with the Department of Child Services to apply for this grant, and I intend to, to apply for it, um, next week or the week after. That was also, uh, one of the things that the board approved in our five-year plan. So, again, we are continuing our existing programs of housing choice vouchers, HUD-VASH, family self-sufficiency, and housing opportunity for persons with AIDS. We had a resident advisory board meeting, um, on March eighth. No one was in attendance, therefore, there were no comments from the resident advisory board or the public. That's it for my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns that the board might have.
Not a question or concern. I just always want to, um, say thank you for, for running a, a really great, uh, housing program that we don't have any, uh, financial audits on, that, um, that we don't have any complaints that are sent to us. And, um, and we know that there are a lot of people that are benefiting from the program. And so, just, uh, again, uh, thank you for that. Yep. Comments from the board?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Ms. Baca, for coming and presenting to us today. Obviously, we are a veteran community. And you talked about expansion of the VASH program, so I'm gonna continue to be in favor of that. And I am concerned about, uh, budget cuts for survivor benefits, in other words, widows, and we emailed a little bit about that. This is your response. You said, veterans, widows are eligible to receive section-eight preference we have for veterans. We also passed existing HUD-VASH vouchers along to those widows, and I will double-check with the VA to see if they complete needs assessment for the widows only for housing referrals, and I'll get back to you. So, I, I guess that we're waiting for a response from, from the, the VA?
No, I apologize. I, I did send you, um, a follow-up email to that, 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 um, you, that you didn't see.
I might have it.
Nope, it, but, but they, so I, I was able to, uh, reach the VA, and, um, while the, the widows are still offered certain benefits, once the, the veteran passes away through the, through the federal government, this is one benefit that they are not offered. And, um, however, in the past, when the head of household who was a veteran has passed away, the, the VA has worked with us to allow us to continue offering housing services through the HUD-VASH voucher until we could move the, the widow or widower over to, um, regular section-eight voucher.
Okay, so it's just gonna be a, a change in a program, basically, but the, the widow, in this case, will still have more or less the same benefits as, as before?
Yes, HUD-VASH is, is a section-eight look-alike, other than, um, some of the, the, the criminal activity that, that section A's, section eight is a little more stringent on. HUD-VASH is not as stringent because, uh, the majority of the, the participants in the HUD-VASH program are receiving case management through the VA.
I see. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, well, we, again, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, if there's no further comments, then I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you again, Anita.
Thank you.
State and federal legislation, all of you see everything that's coming down the, the pipe from the legislature? Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Mr. Karwoska, you have a report?
Yes, um, yesterday was our first open-house public meeting regarding the jail district caps and sales tax. We have upcoming meetings in Wilcox on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, at the Wilcox High School Auditorium. Then, on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, we have one in Palominas, at the Palominas School Gymnasium. On April third, twenty-twenty-three, we have one in Bisbee, in our hearing room. On April fourth, we have one in Douglas, in the City of Douglas Visitor Center. And then, on April fifth, which will be our last one, we have one in Benson, at the Benson School District multipurpose, multipurpose building slash cafeteria. Uh, that would be the end of the open-house public meetings. They are gonna be recorded. They will be online and available to the public. So, I ask people, please attend to get more information and have an opportunity to ask your questions and hopefully get them answered appropriately. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, summary of current events, um, Mr. Crosby.
Yes.
Uh, District Two, I, I, I want you to know, I don't normally, uh, mention things, but there was, um, a water circus, which I'd never heard of before, that the City of Douglas was promoting this past week, and it was so successful, they're keeping it over for another week. So, um, uh, the, um, the venue looks very professional. So, if you're looking for something to do in Douglas that perhaps you haven't thought of before, um, they've extended for another week, and it's called a water circus. So, um, Ms. Judd, what's going on in your district?
Well, the, the only thing we have coming up is the West Fest, which is April fourteenth through sixteenth, so I'll get to remind you about it again. So, that's in Wilcox. Thank you.
Okay, uh, having, all of us having said what we needed to, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, April the eleventh, at ten o'clock AM in the Board of Supervisors hearing room, and it will be for the regular board meeting. Meeting adjourned.